We're live. I'm going to go ahead and call to order our meeting. It's January 13th of Forest Park Public Schools District, District 91. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Ms. Vallo?
Here.
Mr. Rommel?
Here.
Ms. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Cotton? Here. Ms. Wood?
Here.
Ms. Harper?
Here, thank you. Number two, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. And this is with Amaya Moreno and Carolyn Hart of Garfield.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, number three, the reading of the mission, vision, and equity statements.
I...
And this is Anthony Arce.
Forest Park Public School District 91 will be acknowledged by all its safety, nurturing, and diverse learning community that establish the highest standards for innovation and continue improvement to achieve excellent global citizen for each children.
Mission statement. In partnership with home and community is to educate each individual child in a safe and nurturing environment. We will foster respect and self-worth, teach skills to relevant contemporary life, and promote academic and creative expression. We will encourage an appreciation of the rich cultural diversity of our community and instill a sense of wonder for the future to enable our students to become lifelong learners and responsible citizens of the world.
Thank you. Equity statement?
Recognizing that systemic bias has plagued our educational system, we commit to nurturing dialogue around all issues of inequality, including culture, race, status, gender identity, sexual orientation, and different ability. As they pertain to the classroom practices, school and school district structures and policies and producers will support actions removing barriers to opportunities that allow children to reach their full potential.
Thank you so much. So we had again Amaya Moore and Carolyn Hart of Garfield, Anthony Arce of FPMS, Adeline Mata of Grant White, and reading the equity statement, Elias Jenkins of Field Stevenson. Thank you very much. Okay, number four, consent agenda items. Before we make motions to vote, is there anything anyone would like taken off? It's a little awkward because I have a lot of... So, thank you.
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Since everybody presumably had time to read these, a motion to approve.
So moved.
I will make a second motion. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Ms. Vallo?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Cotton? Aye. Ms. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Harper?
Aye. Very good, thank you. Number five, correspondence. Do we have any? Nope, okay. You're over there today, okay. Sorry, I'm having trouble with this. All right, number six, matters of consideration from the public. Are you here to make a public comment? Okay, very good. So you can step up to the podium. And Ms. Barnes is going to give you a time.
This is Bernice Dean Crowley. She's here to speak on specific student issue, anti-bullying policy, and code of conduct.
Very good. And just a reminder that we cannot say individual student names.
Okay. And your time is a maximum of three minutes.
Okay. Can you all hear me?
A little louder.
What about now?
Yes, that's great, thank you.
So last week, my student, I got a call from the principal saying that my student was basically a victim of cyberbullying and where another student had posted naked pictures of her on social media and circulated around the school. That student who did that had only received a three-day school suspension. So I am petitioning the board for stricter consequences for their student, including expulsion. I would also like for the anti-bullying policy and the code of conduct to be updated to include cyberbullying and posting of naked photos of students. And also for there to be formal education to students regarding cyberbullying and posting of blue photos of minors.
I don't want to cut into your time. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
That's the main thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you for addressing the board. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jeanette, did we have any others that came in? Okay. All right. Number seven, superintendent's report. A recognition?
Yes, so we have several of them. I'm going to start off with the hot chocolate with Santa. So on Monday, December 20th, the district office and one board member went to the schools to provide hot chocolate and candy canes to all our children and staff. We traveled with Santa Claus to the schools. He provided that time for us. It truly was an exciting day and one that we hope to continue every year. I truly want to thank Bonnie Doolin, Zach Franchadakis, Jason Stockton, Nurse Nudis, Usetta Ramos, Jeanette Barnes, Edward Brophy, Stephen Johnson, Bob Ladadio, and Kira Tyler. On Wednesday, December 22nd, the Mayor Hoskins and Forest Park Chamber requested volunteers for a toy drive. It was the first that benefited proviso area families, including Forest Park students. Some district office staff and a board member volunteered to wrap gifts to be distributed on Thursday, December 23rd. And so I just want to thank Laura Dickinson, Bonnie Doolin, Jeanette Barnes, Nudis Usetta Ramos, and Shannon Wood. On behalf of District 91 National Board Resource Center at Illinois State University and the Illinois National Board for Professional Teaching Standards Comprehensive Support System, we want to congratulate Megan Bender, who has renewed her National Board certification. So that's pretty exciting to have. And our shield testing. On Tuesday, January 4th, D-91 held a COVID-19 testing for all our students and staff. We had 290 participants, of which 273 students and 17 staff took advantage of this opportunity. A special thank you to Edward Brophy, Bob Ladadio, Nudis Usetta Ramos, Joseph Amawi, Stephen Johnson, Darla Cass, and Eric Beltran for their support. I know this is not part of, that I wrote in the agenda, so I apologize. I can't seem to get this right. Okay. I know it's not part of the agenda. As a surprise, we want to show our board appreciation as January is School Board Appreciation Month. I realize that you are all very humble servants to District 91 and may not want this acknowledgement. However, with the theme this year being Rising Above, I think you would agree that this year during the pandemic, everyone has done their part, whether it has been coming to core visits, volunteering for school events, vaccinations, or COVID testing because Mr. Rommel and Shannon also were part of helping us with vaccinations. So I want to thank you for all you do. And now I'll just go into my superintendent report. As always, I will use the district priorities, starting with learning and achievement. So I'm going to start with our IAR data. And I'll blow this up. The first one you will see here is on Ella. I'll allow you some time to kind of take a look at it. Let me scroll down so you could see the years. The new one here is the 2021. The district average is in black. Jeez, I'm never going to get this right. How do I lower this now? There you go. Okay, this is... Sorry. I think I'm just going to use the clicker instead of the roll. Okay, so as you will see, the state average at 2019, we still do not have the 2021 state average. I'm going to give you some, a time to kind of look at it. Our black students are in orange. Our Latino students are in gray, Asian, and yellow. Let me scroll a little bit down. White and blue, and two or more green district average, just to give you an idea. I'll talk about them in a second. As I scroll down, this is what it looks like in percentage for Ella, meeting and exceeding. Here you will see state averages in black. District average is that dark forest green. Black is in gray. Latino is yellow, Asian, blue. I believe it's like a light green for white and two or more in the, kind of the darker blue. Okay, I'm going to minimize it a bit. We're now going to look at math.
Good Lord.
Again, the black line is the state, and we do not have the 2021 as of yet. Our black students are orange, Latino gray, Asian yellow, blue-white, green is two or more, and a district average, I as mentioned, was under as a darker blue, I believe it is. Okay. Here's what it looks like for math and averages. Our state average is in black. Our district average is forest green. I think everyone can see what that looks like. Students, our diverse students, students with IEPs. This basically is saying that we had no students. And then for math. And I'll move down for our emergent bilingual students, normally known as English language learners. Our state is in black and the district is the green. We then will move down to math for emergent bilinguals. State is in black. District is in forest green. All right. So as we look at the IAR data, it is evident that our scores are not good. I want us to understand that 2021 data is not going to look good for any district. We did not have all our students come to take the test. It was less than 60% of our students. We had families that were dealing with childcare issues or concerns about the pandemic. We also do not have a state average to compare 2021. However, I don't want to spend too much time with the 2021 data, and rather, we should focus on the data of 2019 and earlier, before the pandemic. As you saw, our black and Latino students are way below the 50th percentile. It is very concerning. I also know that D-91 has never looked at data in this way and began to analyze our subgroups. Our diverse learners and emergent bilinguals are in single digits. It seems that other districts are able to show growth, but we have not paid attention to seeing what is occurring and how our students are experiencing school. I also am aware that the test score is not the end-all and is important to see the whole child. We are looking at data very differently here and also have put into place our moves within school annual improvement plans in our, every single one of our schools, as well as the instructional core visits. And we'll be moving further with data meetings and professional learning on data to address these gaps as supported by the Instructional Leadership Ensemble in each building. Once our leaders understand and are informed by data as instructional leaders, they will be able to cultivate collective efficacy within their school buildings so teachers receive guidance, professional learning, and deep conversations about purposeful moves for individual students and grade levels. Also, I'll be working with Christina Davis Salazar, Superintendent of West Chicago D-33, who is on the Assessment Committee for the Illinois State Board of Education. They are evaluating the design, frequency, and information on the Illinois State Assessment, which will most likely be changing in a couple of years, including having a Spanish version of the assessment. I want to make sure I am part of these discussions as we move D-91 to improving our scores in all subgroups. I have also been speaking to State Superintendent Carmen Ayala. I will pause for any questions.
Who has questions? This is a little awkward for me to...
Thank you.
No questions? Dr. Alvarez, can you say a little bit more about the collaboration that you're hoping to have with West Chicago?
So Superintendent Salazar actually is already part of that committee.
Yeah.
And because I'm part of Ayalas, which is the Illinois Association of Latino Superintendents, nationwide, they were looking for support to understand what's happening in the state of Illinois.
Sure.
And so I reached out to Superintendent Davis Salazar to find out a little bit more. And she had said, Liz, you're more than welcome to help and work with this committee, which then prompted me to talk a little bit further with our state superintendent so that I have more information of what is needed and how we could then start supporting our teachers to get what our students need.
I don't think it's an understatement to say that we really haven't looked at our data as a district like this since I began my tenure on the board. So that's at least six years. So, you know, the numbers don't look good, and I'm sure, you know, parents are concerned and frustrated, disappointed. I don't want to put words in people's mouths or assign feelings. I know as a black person with a child in our district, seeing particularly black and Latino scores be not just so low, but also such a precipitous decline is really more than concerning. So the good thing is that it's all out there and you can't fix what you don't know. And so it doesn't serve anybody well to not really look at this, take it in, understand how to move forward, and I think also help families understand our role in this. And so that's what we're going to continue to do. That's the point of our strategic plan. It's the point of school improvement plans. It's all of these things that we're working really hard to show that we believe our students are capable of much more. They are, they deserve more. So that's what we're planning on providing them with.
And I totally understand if they are frustrated and concerned.
Me too.
They have every right to be.
Sure, I agree. I mean, I am, I'm part of that. Like, I want this to be better. So, we'll get there.
Moving on to mid-year strategic plan. Just to give you a little bit of update, there are only a few slides that I have updated on there. The first one is on our five essentials. The five essentials is something that is used in every school's report card, including in the whole district report card. That survey is out, just so you know. So what you're about to see is, this was based on feedback that was received either from the board, from CAC, from anyone that provided. So these are the extra slides now. The five essentials opened two days ago, just so you know, on Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, and it closes on Friday, March 11th, 2022. We are working with the CAC to provide us with further information, and I'll be getting input from students and teachers to compile and add to this presentation. And so you will see here from each of the schools, we don't get any input for student rate lowered in fourth grade. So it's understandable why we wouldn't in Garfield and Betsy, while you would see the 0%. But the teacher rate, you could see here where we are. Our low is coming from our middle school teachers and our highest coming from Garfield. And then for a parent rate, you will see here our lowest coming from Grant White and our highest coming from Betsy Ross.
Lowest is middle school.
Right, it's middle.
I'm sorry? Oh, middle, yeah. Lowest is middle school. I apologize. Our Forest Park Middle School, yes. And so we are really wanting input from our families, from our teachers, and our students here, particularly in our Forest Park Middle School, to get 100% because it allows us to see where they're feeling and what we need to fix. So that survey is out. We want to make sure that our principals are sending it out to make sure our teachers see this survey and our parents see the survey as well. We'll give opportunity during the day for our students to fill it out to make sure that that occurs.
Dr. Alvarez? Yes, I'm sorry. How long does this survey take to complete?
I would say it's a total of maybe 15 minutes.
Okay.
So that's the five Es. I've also added the D-91 core values. That was something that was mentioned during our second retreat. That, where is it? Here it is. Brought it in. That is going to be added to the slides, reminding ourselves our, our foundation is physically responsible, planning. And just updated this slide with our three priorities to say 2026. And updating the last one to talk about our championing of the work, really, and our momentum of developing these deadlines, such as the school improvement plans, to address the gaps and provide feedback. And so I want to remind everyone that principals will be presenting in February their school annual improvement plans as a group to show how they are collaborating, providing coherence for the work, and together reaching the 2026 goals that we have set forth.
We're really excited to have the principals come in and present.
In February.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to it. So if you're comfortable and you want to support your principal in person, there's lots of space, sanitizer, masking here. Otherwise, of course, we'll be streaming it. So, and then the board will be voting on the strategic plan in May, I think is when we decide it.
Thank you.
Sure.
So moving on to technology safety. I have shared a form with the board in your packet regarding technology safety. I did receive one question from a board member that was answered and shared with the entire board. If you have any questions regarding this, because of confidentiality, please feel free to reach out to Zach Franchadakis or myself.
Thank you.
Moving on to principal evaluations. I have started conducting principal evaluations that started in December last month. I've completed three out of the six. I'm saying six because this also includes our Director of Student Services. I will also be providing evaluations for district office personnel, such as our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Director of Innovative Instruction, Family and Community Engagement Manager, Network Coordinator, and Superintendent Executive Secretary, giving a total of 11 evaluations that will be completed by March 1st. Our principals will also be conducting evaluations for staff or have been, particularly those that are non-tenured staff, staff that are in need of evaluations, such as aides and secretaries. And regarding our aides and secretaries, they are working right now to develop a rubric because that has not been done in the past. As a matter of fact, Ms. Hopper has provided a folder so that the conversations can start happening soon. And in conducting, completing these will be part of the principal evaluations. Any questions?
So is it fair to say that everybody in the district, for the most part, will be receiving evaluations?
Yes, I think the only one we didn't put in there was our lunch staff.
Okay, maintenance also gets...
And our maintenance.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mid-year instructional core visits? Our mid-year instructional core visits are around the corner, so if any of you want to join. We start the first week of February 2022. We are using Richard Elmore's model, where he poses seven principles for improvement of student learning. For those of you who don't know Dr. Elmore, he was a professor at Harvard and passed away just last year. And he talks about seven principles, the first being defining the instructional core. And within the instructional core, there are three ways to improve student learning. And the first one is raise the level of content that students are taught. The second is increase the teacher's skill and knowledge that they bring to teaching of that content. And the third is increase the level of students' active learning, the engagement of that content. So there are three ways to improve that he speaks of. The second principle says change one part of that core. So you either change the content of the students, you either change the skill of the teachers and knowledge, or you change the level of students' active learning and engagement. And if, if not, you change all three. And so the third principle is if you can't see it, then it's not there. That's simple as that. The fourth, take, a task predicts the performance. So the task that we give our students, the task that our teachers are preparing, will predict what our children should be able to perform. The fifth principle is real accountability is in the task. Accountability that our teachers are expecting for themselves as they're trying to reach certain goals, and accountability for our students as they are reaching their own personal goals. And then these six principles, learn by doing the work, actually just sitting there and talking and discussing about what is happening in our classrooms. The seventh principle is a description before analysis, analysis before prediction, and prediction before evaluation. So before you start evaluating anything, you need to describe what's occurring. So Alvarez states that we learn to do the work by doing the work, not by making more policies about the work, not by spending money on the next new idea about the work, not by asking people to do what they do not know how to do and pretending that they do, and not by claiming that things are getting better when one part of the distribution is improving while other parts are staying the same or getting worse, as you saw from our data. He finds that the work lies in the face-to-face interactions among people, our teachers, and people are responsible for student learning around the work in the presence of that work. Any questions regarding our core visits?
Just a comment. I was privileged enough to do some of the core visits that we did early there this year. And to those of, those on the board who were unable to do that for whatever reason, especially those who don't have an educational background, I highly recommend you do it, if you at all can. I learned more in that week than I have learned in many years coming to these meetings. And I had a chance to see exactly how Dr. Alvarez and her team and all the teachers in the district do their, do their work. And it is, it has made me a lot better at sitting, sitting behind this table. So if you can do it, do it. And thank you for the opportunity to let us do that.
Thank you for joining us. I did want to mention too, keep in mind that every principal or team there or ensemble there came up with a practice of promise from the beginning of the year. And it is time in the middle of the year that they're going to discuss what that practice of promise is. It could be they're just discussing... It could be they're just discussing how it is improved, how they have tweaked it, or perhaps maybe they need to change it. And so that practice of promise is what they are going to be sharing with us for middle of the year, and then we go into the classroom to see, is it occurring?
Got it. Dr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Do you have dates or could you send those out for those that have to plan ahead of time? Because I would definitely like to go to at least one.
Absolutely. Now that we mentioned it, I'm looking right at Mr. Adler, if he could just kind of put our members on there and who could join. Thank you. Moving on to our second priority, family and community engagement. Starting off with our website update, which is exciting, the district is in the process of transitioning and consolidating our websites, websites, I should say. This process will take about three months to complete, and it started in mid-December 2021. Our target launch is the end of the school year for our new website and mobile app. When this happens, there will not be major interruption to our site. This will be an almost seamless transition. We will keep our domain of F P S D 91.org. As work continues to be done behind the scenes, the main page will be updated with dates, announcements, and COVID information. All other information may be outdated on the current site, but we'll all be up to date on the new site. Any questions?
Thank you.
This is unbelievably exciting.
Moving on to hot chocolate with superintendent. On Monday, December 20th, 2021, I held a virtual meeting with parents to discuss COVID-19. I also asked for parent input on what we can do better, how they see any changes based on the pandemic and our decreasing enrollment. At this time, parents shared concerns about curriculum, and I really thank them for bringing that up. One of the topics that was mentioned is that they felt students were being taught skills and standards that they already knew, and it was because teachers are trying, they were thinking that there was teachers trying to catch up with time lost from the last year. And their concern was to please teach children what they don't know. And that was one topic that came up from the hot chocolate with superintendent. Any questions for that? I do want to say that they were very thankful for all the teachers and saying like they could understand like why they would want to go back because of lost time. All right. Our last priority is talent recruitment and development. So we have...
Dr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Do you want to do COVID vaccination status?
Oh, of course I do. So sorry.
That's okay.
COVID vaccination status. On Thursday, December 23rd, we held another vaccination site at Grant White. This is the one that we had support from two of our board members, so thank you very much. We had 206 participants get vaccinations and boosters, and there are 279 students fully vaccinated at District 91. We will be holding two more vaccination events at Grant White, one on Monday, January 17th, which is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I want to stress that that day, it should not be looked upon as a day off, more as a day of service. And that'll be next week on Monday, and one on Saturday, February 12th, so we could also honor Abraham Lincoln's birthday. And both events are from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for any of our parents who want to get their children vaccinated or get boosters for themselves.
Is the clinic on a Saturday, which is a big deal, but on the 12th, is that also at Grant White?
Yes.
Okay.
Both at Grant White. So hope to see you there.
Yeah. Can I just say a couple things?
Sure.
So it's a community event, so people, you do not, it's not just for families in our district, it's for anyone. There is a preregistration available. If you don't do it, you can still walk in. So we really cannot stress how much we really want people in our community, surroundings community, to consider vaccination and/or get boosted. So Dr. Alvarez, of the 270 students who've received a full dose...
279.
271, thank you.
Nine.
Nine?
Two, seven, nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Of those students, how, what's our denominator? Like, how many are eligible? Because if we subtract...
The preschool, you mean?
Yeah. So how many...
I would have to get those numbers unless someone in the back can give it to me now. Yep, he's getting it now.
Okay, thank you.
They're in the back row.
594.
Okay, so 279 out of 594, okay.
594, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. And then we also have our COVID dashboard.
Yes.
That we update. Like, knowledge is power. So, but if people have questions, they should certainly be in touch with their principal and make their way from there. Any, before we go to the next item, any questions?
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is huge.
All right, moving on to talent recruitment and development, our last priority, our hiring process. We have revamped how we do hiring here at District 91. The process is now a two-to-three round interview process. Questions are developed by an ensemble that will interview the candidate based on the role description. Resumes will be reviewed first, and then those that make the cut will be put through the first round interviews. Those on the interview panel will then look at their scores based on a rubric tied to questions and score to see who moves to the second round. There'll be different people on the interview panel per round to get all perspectives as we bring in quality, teachers' quality, employees to District 91. High quality, I should say.
So this is for all positions?
Correct.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Sure. So teachers, instructional assistants...
Yeah, we are working with transportation to get that going...
Yep.
...as well, and that's in the process right now.
Okay.
What is the timing in between the rounds? I know a lot of jobs are saying people are losing because the process can take three to like three to six months, which is ridiculous for someone to employ a job. About what is that timing?
We just hired Mr. Romero. So if I could give you the timing, I want to say it was within a month or so, the process. It takes time to make sure that we have everyone ready to meet, review stuff, yeah.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry, Lauren, go ahead. If I understood this correctly, does this mean that you're getting rid of the online survey when they turn in their resume for certified positions? Or are you still doing that as part of their submitting...
Oh, you mean the one that they go on? No, that, they still do that.
Okay.
Correct.
Thanks.
I apologize. I was like, what online survey? Yes, they still do that. That's how we go and check through what they write, your resume, all of that is the letter of intent that is all provided, where we then start looking through all of them. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a database, is that what I'm, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Go ahead.
I just had a real quick question. When you're going through the screening process, particularly with the teachers and looking at, you know, talking to them through how they do what they do, is that informed by the standards that we use for the core visit that we've been using for the core visits? Is that part of the, or is that too granular for the process?
It probably is too granular for the process, but...
Understood.
I did, speaking with some of my principals, they, this is the reason I said two to three rounds, because they were saying, can the third round be that we observe them teaching?
Oh. That's exciting.
Nice. That is exciting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we... All right. Okay, great, thank you. Oh, were you done? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Apologies. Thank you.
And then, if you want to call the next one?
Yes, see Status of District Finances.
Okay, so I'm going to click on it so that we could all see it. So basically, this is just a TRS Teachers Retirement System in Illinois. I don't want to read it to you. But basically, it's an optional savings plan that allows TRS members to allocate a portion of their gross pay to a 457B deferred compensation plan that is administered by Voya Financial. Basically, the purpose of this plan is to supplement existing TRS pension for members.
So this is, did anything for an expenditure of ours? This is just extra money that they're going to be able to put in?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's the, that's the end of my superintendent report.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, let's shift into committee reports. I will start. Mr. Rommel, feel free to chime in. So teacher negotiations, we are kicking off with a meeting on the topic next week and hoping to get something on the calendar sooner rather than later for, to sort of talk about how we want this all to proceed. So it's happening. We're kicking it off.
Do I have a second?
We have the one meeting, I think, next Friday with the...
Yeah, that's it. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, B, board policy.
So we have a bunch of policies we're bringing forward this evening. Nothing really significant, other than a few slight wording changes that differ from what we're getting from press, and those are wording changes based on language we've already talked about, terminology that we just don't, we don't agree with, but nothing substantive for this round. We do have a few items that we'll be talking about in February, but that's February.
Okay, great, thank you. C, finance, that's myself and Mr. Lyons. We haven't had a meeting. We don't have anything to add, right? Okay. Mr. Ruffey, we probably should, I would say, like, February, March.
Please, please. Share a moment.
Yep. Okay, great. So we'll plan for something February-ish, pending schedules. Okay. D, engagement. Ms. Fallow?
We have, I think it's on. We have quite a report. Last month, Monique reported out that we were reexamining the function of the Community Engagement Committee. Nudis and I had a fabulous meeting on Monday. Monique was called to an emergency meeting of work. So Nudis and I went ahead and plotted out what the new structure of the Community Engagement Committee will be. Very exciting. All right. In the past, we've had to rely on the committee to kind of go to, or to bring the community to us. Our new purpose is going to be to get the board more in to the community by building a support system for the board based in different groups throughout the community. So like, who can we rely on as the board to kind of help us with our mission? Not by disclosing things that we talk about, obviously, but like, how are we going to address some of our initiatives and get that support from the community, but get it from different parts of it, recognizing that the school district doesn't only mean parents and children, it means all of Forest Park. So moving forward, we are going to get a support system together for board work, and that's going to include different groups that we are going to refer to as stakeholders, and we're going to hold stakeholder roundtables. This is going to include business groups, parent groups, district employees, not necessarily just, I mean, any district employee. We're going to look into our senior community. We're going to hit our child-free population. They're still taxpayers, they still have a stake in the school board, still super, or school district, rather, still super important to get them involved. And then village leadership as well. We have plotted out to meet the first Monday of every month at noon at the main office, looking through different events that are going on. We're going to send out spreadsheets of here are all the things that are happening in the schools, and then if we can, because everyone has, you know, lives and work and busyness, if we can, have folks sign up to go to different events. And it's not like be a hero and go to every one of them. Like, pick one, pick another one, you know, we'll get people, we'll get us out, and then we'll also get people in to kind of support our mission and the mission of the district. We really, I don't, am I, I'm, yeah, right? I like that very much. So yeah, that's, it's going to be more of an informal space to gather some feedback to. We just kind of want to get the community kind of more unified as to what the district and the board is doing, as opposed to like, we are here, you are there. Like, we're kind of all in it together because we've all got to make it work. So now the function and focus is how are we going to do that and what are the next steps? So our February meeting, first Monday, noon, main office, or virtual with the Google-y meets, will do, you know, we're going to, we've got some good wheels in motion. I was, we were super jazzed and it was a very loud Google Meet meeting between two brains firing at rapid speed. So it was great. And that's where, that's where we're going to start. We're going to have lots to report all the time.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Help me understand the, how the, I think I get it, but I'm not entirely sure, how the function of this is different than like a CAC, for example?
Oh, I'm not actually sure what the CAC is. Because I just, I don't, I would love to sound smart, but I can't.
Okay.
This is, you want it to...
So essentially, this is more of like a comment that kind of conversation that would have a... You know, what they would like to see as a district, how they could support and partner with us.
Okay.
Or where like, if you could do a report on the meet assessment, this is more particular aiming for what are our assets, our communities, and our needs, just that as, right, you're not really interpreting anything, and then even more like this meeting session, that's probably for other officers. We live aboard outside of four meetings.
Okay.
So we're just only for two minutes, and not really...
And the other thing that we talked about, too, was in years past, the committee has functioned as a support to, Nudis is doing, are you trying to phrase it the right way? Nudis is doing her job of community engagement so well that we just are trying to build on that and like we're under a bar?
Okay.
As opposed to before, where we were having to drive the thing.
Right.
Are you, okay, I see your eyes. Okay. Right? Like, that's, right? So we were having, what? Right, so we don't have to, we don't have to drive, we can passenger all together on the bus.
Got it. Okay.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
No, no, that's fine. No, I'm curious, if you guys are going to meet once a month, and we'll have something from you every month, so I'm curious to see how this takes shape.
Oh, same. It's going to be great.
Thank you, and thank you, and thank you, and...
The rain's on fire. We were, we were rolling.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No.
You good? All right, I don't want to move away too quickly. Thank you. Okay, E, superintendent evaluation. Ms. Wood and, yeah, and Mr. Lyons, go ahead.
Okay. So we are going to use the same rubric, which I will be emailing to the board members tonight or tomorrow morning. And we took three of Dr. Alvarez's goals that she set out in her leadership plan. It was emailed in our newsletter August 6th. I can resend that as well if you want to look. Dr. Alvarez has some goals in there, but some of them are dealing with her relationship with staff and the union, and that is really hard for us to assess. So, Dr. Alvarez, that would be something that we would like for you to do, is come up with like a goal tracker, so that if you, like, we don't need a detail of it. One of your goals was like, give feedback after a visit, right? And to meet a little bit. This is just an idea, we'll still talk about it, this is not go home tonight and do it, so that we know that you did it or how you did it. And it could just be a very general update, it doesn't have to be very detailed, but you laid out so many great goals, but we can't assess if you, how you've done them or how well you've done them, that's all.
And I, so just so you know, some of the... And I, so just so you know, some of the feedback that I have given to staff, I have included anyone, I believe you were a part of that one time, too? Or I've included Kira or Mr. Rommel in that?
Yes.
So I will, and, oh, Mr. Lyons was there, too. Starting to remember everyone. So is that what you're referring to?
Yes, or, and we can talk more in detail, but you have other ones, like regarding, working with. Hold on, I'm going back to the the plan. One of your interpersonal goals was to grow with your interactions with each school leader. So if there's just a way that we can know how you're doing that, or that you've done it, so that we can, I mean, these are all really great goals and really important, but we can't just sit and say, yes, she did it, if we don't sure, no, you know what I mean?
Well, I think, too, we've all done activities with her throughout the, you know, since she got here. So I think part of what will help you get this together is, once you get our feedback and we see the rubric, so we can provide you with that. Because I think that'll be, that'll be helpful, too.
Sure, team effort, right? What I wanted to do is, we did not take all of your goals, because it was hard, right?
Sure.
I would like to do that. So for next year, we want, I don't want to leave, we don't want to leave off any of your goals, right? We want to be able to assess them. And if that's giving each other feedback about those visits, which takes a little off of your plate, that could work, too. We can have conversations about that. Let's see, we talked about that. I think that's it. I did talk with Ms. Tyler about the idea of coming up, like, Mr. Lyons and I talked about, we would like to do a whole different rubric. And Ms. Tyler and I talked about that that might be a board as a whole project, so that we can get together to meet and we can all, you know, get input, put our input in, not just the committee, that we can meet, there'll be input, and then Mr. Lyons and I can get in and fine tune it, right? But to have everybody involved in that, because it's such an important thing to do for us and for Dr. Alvarez, so.
But that's not now, right? That's
No, not now, in the future.
Yep.
You know, I don't know. I'll let you know next month. But I will send out the form, so that you guys can see what we'll be doing. And then we're doing ours.
Dr. Alvarez is going to do hers first.
Right.
So that will be done for February. And then we will plan to get together. We will do ours as a board separately, then come together to talk about it in March, and then share it in April. So that's the timing that we're thinking of. Okay?
Yes.
We had a lot of moving pieces.
I know.
All right, were we missing anything?
No, that's all I got.
All right, PPC.
There was not a December meeting. Our next meeting is Wednesday.
Very good. CAC.
Okay, so, we did not meet last month. We'll be meeting Wednesday as well, but I have some notes that were sent to me. So, our two, we have turned into two subcommittees in December. One focusing on parent handbook and one on asset and need assessment. The parent handbook one, which I'm part of, we are doing our first read-through of what we've had. And people, I've seen a couple people already put in their notes on what suggestions they have for change. I plan on reading it again and putting my notes in this weekend. And then the asset and needs assessment is in the first step of seven steps. It's a strategy to produce an assessment of both the district, our schools, and the community by the end of March, early April. And this will happen every year and will be, will help to inform the strategies used year to year for the district and the school improvement plan. And then the two bullets that they want to be clear is that it is a process used to understand and create a profile of the needs and also what our strengths are. Without a current or comprehensive assessment, we have, are less likely to provide offerings or foster partnerships that effectively address risk and promote opportunities for all of our students and family. And the purpose of the needs assessment is not a rigorous scientific evaluation that sorry, to impact individual programs or strategies and curricula and whatnot, but it is to gather a wide range of information from focus groups and surveys and town hall meetings, and put them together for us to work with and change things as we go. It's the living documents that will continue to change as our district changes and help us focus in on our needs to propel our assets that we already have, and also to change and alter and improve the needs that we have. And that's all I've got.
Got it. Thank you. I have B delegate.
I have nothing for now.
For all of you that are still with us, if you haven't noticed already, our theme is that if you didn't think that we communicated before, we were making up for that a million times over. Get ready to get real sick of us. And I mean that in the acts of best nine. I said all that, the mic was off. Nine, items for discussion. So that's me. Let's talk about our asset needs assessment. So obviously, Ms. Cross just talked about that as it relates to the CAC. And from a board perspective, you know, it's not often that we get to have a real discussion just to have it, I mean, it's for a purpose, right? But we don't have to vote on anything right now, or there's, there's no need to do something like that. So what I really wanted to do was pose this question to the group, which is essentially, and I don't know where to look, so I'm just going to look forward, which is essentially, as we approach the second anniversary of the pandemic, which has changed the educational system in unimaginable and necessary ways. It's given us a lot to think about. What do we think about the assets that we have as a district? And where do we see needs that we would like to provide solutions for? So what I'm interested in are things that we're not doing well and we want to change. Things that we'd like to do better, and you don't have a solution, but you're curious about, hey, I'm thinking about this. I want to put it out there. Assets that we have, are we using them well? Are they suiting our needs? Can we make changes? Assets from the perspective, too, of things that we're doing well, how do we further take those forward, highlight, expand, make them more user-friendly? So this is really just an open discussion, and as long as we, within reason, have a good conversation going, I'm open to just sort of talking about it. So does anybody want to start us off? Yeah, Mr. Rommel, go ahead.
I mean, just based on what we heard this evening, and especially what we saw in the superintendent's report, and not knowing anything about what the survey is going to look like, right? Because we're just starting the process.
Right.
I would submit our first priority would need to be the vast disparities that we saw in just student performance. I mean, there is, there's pretty clearly there are differences in who is doing well and who is not, that I find profoundly disturbing. And I think we should at least understand why that's happening, and then start to look and say, what do we need to do? What assets do we need to redeploy to address those?
Great, thank you. I also want to point out, too, that one of the reasons why I wanted to have this discussion now is that we're six months in with a new leader. And so that obviously brings about a different opportunity. We now see how she works, how she connects with people in our, in our community, you know, some of what she's capable of. So that's also something to take into consideration. How do we feel about our curriculum? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, it was bopping me in the head.
I think as we look in, into how the pandemic has affected traditional classroom learning, it's almost time to look at what traditional curriculum means. We don't necessarily all need to be in the same place at the same time anymore. We, like, we know that now. So what is that, how does that translate into a more diversified and differentiated curriculum? Is that something that, because we see that a non-traditional setting works, and it had to work and did to a point, clearly, there's disparities in the test scores, and I was going to echo exactly what Mr. Rommel said. But when you're, when we look at curriculum, is that something that we need to take more of a deep dive into and say, all right, well, you know, if, if A was non-traditional learning environment, then B might be a non-traditional, yet still standards-based, you know, effective curriculum? Because the whole, I mean, the whole environment has changed. Everything is different now, and it likely won't go back to being, I mean, I always just say, it will never be March 14th of 2020 ever, like, it will never be March 14th again. It will be March 15th on. So then it becomes our job to kind of say, all right, how do we then modify? And we're small enough to do it, which I think is the cool thing. We're small enough to say, how can we kind of flip our approach to delivering instruction and to implementing, again, like a differentiated, more diversified curriculum? We've got great teachers. We have amazing teachers, and we always have. And again, we're small enough where we can play with some things, which I think gives us a really unique opportunity that a lot of larger districts don't have. So, I mean, I guess that's my, that was
I was going to say that we probably should leave this to the CAC and invite everyone to just join and get input from our, you know, citizen advisory.
Oh, sorry.
This conversation?
This conversation, yes.
Okay.
One other thing, just to piggyback on
You can finish up, yeah.
I'm done. No, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. I'm sorry, I didn't
No, you're good.
Sorry.
You're good.
You go.
So you're
I'm good.
One of the things that you, that you alluded to, and I, I think it's, it's absolutely critical, it's not going to be, things are very different now. I think there's two components to it. There's curriculum, which we're directly talking about, but there's also just the way we, like, classroom behaviors and things like that. So there's like two components to this. There's what we teach, and then there's how we actually put the information across. And also, what's the, what's happening around the students that are either helping them or hindering them from learning? And I feel like there's a lot of stuff that, that Dr. Alvarez has brought in that we saw in the core visits, where it's like talking about behavior and things like that. So I think this is a lot bigger than just curriculum. And I think we should look at all of it.
Yeah, I do as well. I don't want to really cut anybody off, if you, if anybody wanted to offer something.
Well, I'm just, so, I do agree that we need to have the CAC on this, but I'm not how, sure how we get all of the board in on it at the same time.
I agree.
I don't know.
Well, I think that that's part of the hope, is that some of what is discussed can be shared with the CAC, because to your point, there's just one person on there with an alternate. We're not all on that. So, you know, I think this is an ongoing conversation, but we're also the governing board of the district, and they are an advisory committee. So these two bodies can work in tandem to provide creative solutions. But if we're not thinking big, and we're now in pandemic 1.8, right, or whatever, I don't know. I don't know where we are. I have no clue.
Trilogy from hell.
Pandemic 4.2, I don't know. And so, but if we're not thinking about how we come out of this doing things better, smarter, more creatively, you know, in a way that better impacts our entire enrollment, right, then we're not doing it right. So I just want us to be a part of that continued solution, obviously. You know, just want to fund things, we want to also be a part of the solution.
It's a whole new world.
It is a whole new world. I see it as an awesome opportunity.
Yeah.
When we were, you know, interviewing Dr. Alvarez, I was like, I want someone who makes big ideas and potentially big mistakes. How do you know otherwise, right? You don't know. So we don't want to play with people. And obviously, we have a really important role to play, but big ideas are how you get to somewhere great. I'm looking at you, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
The only thing that I wanted to add is, like, when we're looking at it, like, not just curriculum, like, what are the other stuff the district can do?
Right.
Like, earlier, randomly, I was scrolling through, like, old Facebook videos, and I see, like, where I'm posting stuff at other schools that they're doing, that I don't see why we don't do it at Forest Park, like, the plays that East I used to always go to. Their concert band, when they combined the schools and did like this huge concert. So just those little extra things that brought me into the, like, I had, I didn't have a kid in band, didn't have a kid in theater, didn't have a kid a lot of places, but because those schools had it, I went to it, just as support. So looking at not just curriculum, is what can make us extra? But not even extra at this point, because a lot of districts just have this. What are we not offering that should be? That's not, I mean, it's, it'll be curriculum, but not, like, veering off to where, yes, all this is important, but we also need to look at the whole child. And all, a lot of that stuff, it pees into it.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to take notes for this. Are you saying, like, extracurriculars or specials that are more
I'm not sure how it would look, but like, whether it's a school day or after school, like, I'm not really sure how we can fit it in, like, theater programs.
There are districts that say, everybody in fourth grade chooses an instrument. You do it for fourth and fifth, and that's their band, and then, or orchestra or whatever, and then it moves forward. So I don't want to put words in your mouth, but
Right, like, something like that, where it's, I don't know
Like, fine arts and
Yeah, during the school, yeah. Things like that, languages, that's throughout the whole, from preschool on up. Like, things like that, those extra, where it's something that should be offered in a public school. I just don't know where it fits. So it's thinking of those things, not just when you think of curriculum, you're thinking of like math, you're thinking of English, you're thinking of science, because all of that needs to encompass it.
All right, so I think that's a good, a good place to pause for now. Thank you for being open.
I just want to make sure, you all know you could get on the CAC and give your input. I just want to make sure you know that.
Yeah, I think we know that, but I
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think our board members are so engaged, it can be hard to, like, get yourself into something else.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. B, Mr. Roffey, do you want to talk about the annual audit report?
Yes, please. Don't you?
Sure do.
Thank you. Just some brief items to note, that for our fiscal year 2021, the most important thing that needs to be communicated is that it is an outlier year, because we had lower-than-usual expenditures. So if there's one thing that everyone needs to take away from FY 2021, it is that it's very unique financially, in terms of having the lower expenditures that we did. We did not spend as much as we usually did. As you can see, based on the data that's been shared, seven of our nine funds, we saw our reserves increase. And in two of our funds, they were reduced. I do want to point out, in those two funds, our operations and maintenance and our TORT fund, the operations and maintenance, both in the tax year of 2020 and in this most recent tax year, 2021, which concluded on December 31 of 2021, 14 days ago, we levied the maximum rate we could levy in our operations and maintenance to shore up its reserve level. So I just want to make sure that that gets communicated. And then for our TORT fund, you see that that was reduced as well by $193,000. The reason is because the expenditures we have in that fund annually are around $130,000. So we don't need to carry a significantly large fund balance in that fund. We only need to carry about $500,000. So we are strategically spending that fund balance down in our TORT fund. So I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that. The only other points to mention are, because we didn't have students in our schools, if you can really think about it, we're January of 2022 right now. A year ago, we still didn't have kids in the schools. We didn't have kids in the schools until about the second week of February of 2021, if you can all think about that. So as a result of that, we didn't incur as much of our extra-duty expenditures. We didn't have a need for as many substitute teachers. We didn't have a lot of the onsite activities that we provide students. So ultimately, So ultimately, our expenditures were significantly lower. As we plan for the next fiscal year, we want to make sure we position ourselves for the things that we need to do as, based on that data that you saw earlier presented by Dr. Alvarez. We want to make sure that our students have the resources that they need. Any questions in regard to our FY 2021 annual audit? And that's all for that item, madam. So in January of every fiscal year, we present our second fiscal quarter financial report. It represents our activity from October, November, December. So in this case, October, November, December of 2021. Most important things to point out, if you'd like to go to the next page. In this fiscal quarter, as you can see right here in October, for receipts in our education fund, we captured just over $4 million. That is an outlier rarity. It's because the property tax receipts were late. We normally capture that revenue in the first fiscal quarter. And this year, they were late getting out because the assessor was late. So we received them in our second, at the early part of our second fiscal quarter, capturing, as you can see, the $5.4 million in this fiscal quarter. Just to put that in perspective, a year ago, in the second fiscal quarter, the revenue we captured was $1.3 million. So very indicative of, again, outlier situation for our revenue. Going on to the dashboards, as you can see, this is our expenditures dashboard. Right where we expected to be midway through the fiscal year, we're still below what we expect to be our threshold for that. And then on the last page, the year-over-year fund balance. All three fund balances, except for our transportation fund, were lower this year, as of December 31st, compared to last year. And remember, we spent less money last year, so we would expect last year's to be higher. That's all for our second fiscal quarter report, unless there are any questions, Madam President.
I just had one question. One of the, one of the things that we voted on, I believe it was last meeting, was drawing down our reserves because we were getting more timely payments. But it sounds like we got a late payment. Is that?
Yes, precisely. So of course, the timing, the timing happened to be for the, the seven-plus consecutive years that the Cook County Treasurer managed to finally disperse taxes on time. This fall, they didn't. The good news for us is we had healthy reserves to support us for the first fiscal quarter, until that revenue was received in October. We don't anticipate late receipts in the coming fiscal years. And as we did reduce the target threshold from 12 months to 10, we will be monitoring that activity.
Is that fair to say?
Say again.
We still have some room, even with just the 10 months.
Correct.
That's not putting it, okay.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Not a question, but Chipotle's opening soon.
We are excited about that EAV.
We're very excited to welcome a new business into town.
Very much so. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Okay, number 10, consent agenda items to discuss in closed session. So may I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make it.
I'm sorry. Hold on one second. May I have a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of the employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees and student discipline cases?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Let's go into closed session.
Okay, thank you. This is where I keep messing up. Hold on. I'm gonna get this right today. All right, um, can I? Sorry, one second. Have a motion to approve the closed session minutes. I will make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Number 11, um, items. Okay, I'm, we're, we're gonna work on this. It's like not clear for me. Uh, sure, I will make the motion.
Second.
Hold on one second, let me say it. Jeanette, I'm sorry, items that we discussed in closed session? Can't I do a motion in a second for those?
No, that was the minutes.
I thought I just did it. No, I thought I just did it. You're saying what was disc- I'm sorry, the personnel items? Okay, I'll have to get, um, okay, so I will make a motion for the personnel items that were approved in closed session. May I have a second? Monique gave a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I've been doing that incorrectly, so I'm gonna, I'll work on that. Something about that isn't clear for me. Um, okay, great. Number 11, items for action. Um, let's have a motion to discuss considering a recommendation to approve the proposal from Camino Group for stakeholder engagement data technical analysis and assistance and professional learning for $34,000. I will make the motion. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Great, discussion.
I have provided, uh, this to the board in a packet. Um, so as previously shared.
Mic, mic's on, there you go. Um, I provided this in the board packet, but as pre- previously shared prior to and shortly after I started, um, and presented at the board meeting in October, there is a substantial need to establish an evidence-based culture throughout the district to ensure decision-making that is tied to student learning and achievement. As you saw from our IAR data and where as we go into FastBridge data, there are strong indicators of this need. Um, this requires implementing a process of learning from data which promotes assessment literacy among our educators and builds trust by making decisions based on evidence and data sources. Evidence-based culture also requires stopping the habit of reading things into data that are not present and grounding our instructional planning and adjustments that are truly based on our data. And that means making sure that our teachers, our principals are very comfortable looking at data and being informed by data so that they know how to make the appropriate moves. The Camino Group will assist in developing our evidence-based culture and will begin immediately working with our stakeholders, particularly the instructional leadership ensembles that we have in each of our schools and also supporting with our, um, school improvement plans. And they will support the work on, on those together. And as of right now, the Camino Group is ready to proceed with us. I'm gonna go ahead and scroll and wait if there's any questions.
Well, Dr. Alvarez is scrolling. Are there questions about this item?
Uh, not about the Camino Group specifically, 'cause we, it was in the packet. How many, how many of these different consultancies, I assume, did we talk to before we picked them?
There were two overall.
Okay.
Are there other questions? And Dr. Alvarez, just, um, so I'm clear, this is from now until end of May?
Correct.
Okay. And can you just pull out so there, what the, I mean, I read it, but just to put a fine point on it, maybe for the community, what the deliverables will be?
Sure. Um, so I'm looking for a hub where we could keep all of our data and stored so it's not erased and we could go back year after year.
Sure.
As well as making sure that the professional learning that needs to be done and, and teaching about this hub to us, to our principals, to our teachers, particular our instructional ensembles that are helping with the school improvement plans, get trained, I don't like the word trained, but get the learning needed.
Yep.
And so that eventually they become independent with it and be able to pool out on their own as they work with data. As well as for me to provide that during newsletters to say, here are some questions you should be considering as you're looking at this data. I also want to be able to get graphs. Um, the graphs that you have seen, those have been developed by myself and Mr. Adler, um, using Excel, that normally that's not how it works. Normally you have a, a data strategist that does that, that does, does that for us. And so hopefully the hub will have some graphs that are already there for us to just pool.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
So.
I have one question.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you speak to some of the highlights of the two proposals? What was the differentiation factor that made you go with this versus the other proposal that you had out there?
Sure, the other one basically said that they could go ahead and create it for us, but not necessarily be teaching it to us.
So as I understand it, they're gonna do the research that's in the deliverables piece of it, gather all the data and everything, and they're also gonna be developing and providing this hub for us? Is that something they're building or they have it and they're gonna be putting our information?
They're gonna be utilizing what we have right now um, and taking that information to make sure that we get informed of what we have. And I think I re- I recall I shared with you that we have already some type of system. And that's part of it. But we don't have a data strategist. I, I do wanna reiterate that this is only just to help us. In the future, I, I'm gonna say we will be needing one.
Okay.
Got it. All right, um, let's get ready to vote. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Vallow?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Cross?
Aye.
Ms. Cotton?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Tatum?
Aye.
I'm excited about this.
I am too.
All right, so we're gonna be working with the Camino Group, welcome. Okay, number two, consider recommendation to adopt Board of Education policies for second reading and adoption. Um, I will make the motion. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Okay, uh, the policy committee has met and all adoptions and revisions were discussed. And now just up for adoption.
All right, there was a lot in there, sorry.
Yeah, I, I mean, if I click on it, there's just a lot in there.
I don't know that people are ready for that.
It was a long meeting.
Yeah, does anyone have questions though about any? Okay, did you wanna?
No, just, for, for what it's worth, we basically took all of the press recommendations. The only exceptions, and I noted this before, are, were areas where they're using terminology that we do not use in this district. So any cha- so the only changes we really made were to say, we're gonna substitute the words that they use for the ones that we use in order to be consistent with our own policies.
As well as changing, uh, my name in there or?
Updating.
Yeah, there's a lot of administrative updates.
Okay. Okay, a roll call, please.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Vallow?
Aye.
Mr. Rommel?
Aye.
Ms. Cross?
Aye.
Ms. Cotton?
Aye.
Ms. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Tatum?
Aye.
Okay. Number 12, additional matters for consideration from the board. Does any, okay, go ahead, Ms. Wood.
Um, I don't know if everyone gets them. I get emails occasionally from IASB and they, um, are doing an equity, diversity, and inclusion webinar series. There's five in the series. First one was last night. Um, it was about being intentional about the language you use and why, um, you know, there's certain things that are not appropriate to say anymore because of the meaning behind them, like master bedroom, um, peanut gallery, um, some other ones. Um, also talked about put, um, person first, so instead of a transgender child, a child is transgender. Um, instead of an epileptic child, it is a child with epilepsy. Um, and then they also talked about how, um, because it was school board members, um, it's often brought up about, you know, taxpayers, right? And not everybody, um, owns property in our districts. But there are different kinds of taxes, you know, there's property taxes, there's income tax, there's sales tax. So everyone contributes and is just as important whether or not they own or rent. And, um, that was one of the other ones was other things is apartment tends to lend itself, people think low income. Um, so instead of saying apartment, saying multifamily units. Um, so just being thoughtful on how some words, you know, if you, urban, right, is used, can be used in a way that is negatively seen or rural, right? So just being conscious of what those things mean. Um, and I would encourage you all, they are all, they are free, they're all about an hour. Um, um, they're webinars. Uh, if you didn't get the email, I can always forward it to you. Um, you can register yourself. I really, um, I really enjoyed it and, uh, hope that you guys join us, so. Sure, I can do that. Sure. Okay.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it's primary bedroom.
Yeah, that makes good sense to me. I'm not, I need the etymology on peanut galleries.
Yeah, that's one I had not heard.
Anybody else have anything?
I would only like to add with the vaccination clinics that we're doing, I am so glad it's from eight to seven, 'cause a lot of times it's like in the middle of the day and people can't get away. And this allows, I mean, some people still may not be able to go depending on what their schedule is, but it allows a huge opportunity, having one during the week, having one on the weekend, and still having those hours really allows more families, just with kids or not, people to come in because it has a greater thing instead of doing like an eight to 12 or 12 to, like midday one when some people just can't simply get away, whether they're working from home or doing whatever. I just appreciate having those additional hours to allow more people to try to clear up their availability.
Yeah, great. Um, I had the pleasure of answering the phone at the one for a little while in December and people were so excited to talk to somebody. I guess they didn't think anybody was gonna pick up, but like, you know, I don't know, it was nice to be able to give people information to help them make an informed decision, like help them get what they wanted. It felt very gratifying. All right, um, anybody else?
I, I look up just a few things. So, you know, as I was sort of joking, you know, we are in pandemic 4.8, I don't know, I don't know where we are, to be frank. Um, and, you know, if you're a parent, if you're a teacher, you're a teacher who's also a parent, you're a board member who has children, like, it's a nightmare. Things are very challenging out there. And I think what I just wanna say is to our community, thank you for trusting that we are trying our absolute hardest to do what we believe is the right thing with the information that we have in the moment. Um, it's a real game of whack-a-mole. Um, and I know that there are a lot of people who are really happy, who are unhappy, who are confused, who are frustrated. All of it is valid. Um, I think what we're committed to, and not I think, I know what we're committed to is just continuing to serve our community and prioritizing our children and our staff. Um, so that in a really uncertain hard time, and it's January and it's cold and gray and, you know, that, that our kids can show up to school um, every day and know that there are people here that are excited to see them and teach them and help them grow. Um, and so, thank you for sending your kids. Thank you to our teachers for showing up, continuing to work through with us. Thank you to our administrators. Thank you to our nurse who I met yesterday because I took a PCR and she was lovely. Um, and our administration and our maintenance crew and our, I, I mean, transportation, there's just no way that we could be in school doing what we want to be doing with our students without great support. So, um, thank you for sticking with us.
Okay, um, 13, adjournment. Um, I will make a motion, a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
Happy early birthday. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Uh, what time is it? Hold on, please. 8:19, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.